At this time, we'll reconvene as the Tulare County Planning Commission. And I think we'll have roll call.
Dong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Willatch.
Commissioner Pinting Leonal did inform us you would be absent today.
Aguilar.
Here.
Okay, we'll pass over the pledge since we did that already, and we will go right to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on this agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission today. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments when they come up on the agenda. So that all interested parties may have opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited with the discretion of the Chair. Is there anyone who would like to speak on anything not on the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three. And item three is our approval of minutes from our November fifteenth meeting.
I'll make that motion. We approve November fifteenth.
A second.
Thousand seventeen minutes.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Dong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. And we, on the consent, we have item A, which is an extension of time. So I guess we can look for a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendar.
Sir, a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Dong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, item five is our parcel map hearings, and we generally take these together. We have one that's in the community of Goshen. That's item A. Item B is in Lindsay, Lindsay area. Item C is a township range in Sequoia National Forest. And then we have another one. No, that'd be it.
So Commissioner Millies and I, we have to recuse ourselves on five A. So we'll be leaving.
Okay, well, we'll take those other two first, I guess.
Okay.
So B is a tentative parcel map number PPM seventeen dash zero three nine. And this is a Fumia and Schultz with Neil Zurlang as the land surveyor. There's no issues on this one, apparently raised by any of the commissioners. So are we ready to take a motion on this one?
Through the Chair, a public hearing.
Oh, that's right. We need to, we do need to open the public hearing. The public hearing is open on any of these. Item B firstly. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this one? Okay, no comments on item B, then we'll close the public hearing on B and look to entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. We approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation Section one five three oh three, class three pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM one seven dash zero three nine and waiver final map.
Second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Dong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, item C, we'll open the public hearing on item C, which is a tentative parcel map number PPM seventeen dash zero three seven. This is a map Berlondo Roberts Engineering. And is there anyone that would like to speak on this one? This is the township and range located in the national forest. This is the south half of section three and north half of section ten. And we don't have, if we have no comments, I'll close the public hearing. But I did have a question on this, and I just wanted to ask, did I understand this correctly as a timber sale application? Is that what it was?
Through the Chair, it's a parcel map. So it's, we're not necessarily interested in what the.
Oh, okay. Because I saw that was an intention back in two thousand and four, and I'm just wondering why we're still looking at it, so. Okay, so we'll, the public hearing is closed on item C, and we'll look for a motion then on the parcel map.
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, section one five three oh three, class three pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map PPM one seven dash zero three seven with one exception and the requirement to file a final map.
Zero second.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Dong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
And now we can consider A.
I'll use myself at this time for A.
Okay, item A is a tentative parcel map number PPM seventeen dash zero three eight. This is DNR Land Holdings with Forester and Weber Associates. This project is located on the southwest corner, intersection of Harvest Avenue and Road sixty-eight in Goshen. This is a public hearing, so if anyone wants to speak on this particular project. If not, we'll close the public hearing then, and we can entertain a motion on this one, too.
I'll make the motion that we approve the category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, section one five three oh one, class one pertaining to existing facility and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM one seven dash zero three eight with the requirement to file a final map.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Dong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we can move on now to item six, which is our special use permit number PSP seventeen dash zero five three. Jorge Placentia.
Just so you know, when you get to E, I'll have to recuse myself, so we'll add, and so will Wayne.
So noted. Okay, so the presenter on this one is April. April's going to be busy in the next few here.
Good morning, Chairman Elliot and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner Three, RMA Planning. The project is a special use permit number PSP seventeen zero five three and a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act per the general rule and section one five three oh three existing facilities. The application, the proposal is from Jorge Placentia, who lives in Tulare, and would to allow a contractor's storage yard for mobile food facility trailers that the applicant takes to swap meets and other events. Facility is on a quarter acre portion of a point four two acre parcel located in AE forty. Site's on the north side of Avenue two forty-eight, Cart Mill, west of Road sixty-eight, four miles northwest of Tulare. The site has direct access to Avenue two forty-eight. Public works had no recommended conditions. Estimated maximum daily trips will average about sixteen. The site is outside any urban boundary and subject to the World Valley Lands Plan, which designated for Valley Ike. The proposal's in compliance with the relevant policies of the Tulare County General Plan. As noted, the site's in the AE forty zone, which allows a contractor's storage yard with a conditionally approved special use permit. The application was submitted in response to a co-compliance violation figured by calls and concerns about vehicles parked in the road. The applicant discussed the project with the Project Review Committee in July, and no expansion or additional structures are anticipated. Existing on the site are single-family residence with attached garage, couple of storage buildings, well, septic propane tank, and a diesel fuel tank. Surroundings are zoned AE forty, contained agriculture, dairies, and row crops with scattered rural residences. The nearest off-site residence is on an adjacent home site parcel about a hundred feet from the facility. No impact on the biological resources. There's no species of concern in the area, no wetlands or waterways. The applicant currently stores three trailers with corn and potato roast in the equipment and four pickups on the site, along with two travel trailers for personal use. He lives on the, he lives in the house on the site as well. He and three to four employees transport those trailers to farmers' markets and swap meets on four days a week. They do have a license as a mobile home, mobile food facility vendor with the Environmental Health Services Division, and they've applied for a commissary license, and by now they may already have that. The diesel fuel tank on the site will need barriers and placards and fire extinguishers for the fire department and a hazardous materials business plan for environmental health. Conditions of approval are included. Notice for the public hearing, provided a ten-day comment period, was mailed to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet. Notice was also published in the Times Delta. No other, no comments were received. This and staff's report. The applicant, Jorge Placentia, and his agent Jaime Salinas are in the audience if you have any questions for them.
Is the diesel tank used, or is just there?
Or the, yeah. Jorge or Jaime, would you like to come?
Through the Chair.
Yeah.
We can wait till we open up the public.
Yeah. It was just a question for staff. So we'll open the public hearing now so that we can hear from the applicant. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name Jorge Placentia, address five seven seven eight Avenue two forty in Tulare County. And yeah, that's what I do for living. I've been doing this for eleven years, and I enjoy my business and I love what I do. If you have any questions.
Is the tank used for business, the ten thousand gallon?
Yes, I use the diesel for my pickups for work.
Mr. Plentia, what, this, as I read this, this came about because of a complaint, is that correct? Yes.
Yes, through the Chair. This came to PRC through a building code potential violation. They did receive a phone call. Basically, the cars were parked along the shoulders or waiting to enter the yard itself. So it's, can't, we came to the conclusion at PRC that it was just a matter of design, and we're glad it did come to PRC so we can fix some of those issues. You can see the new design plan so that cars can freely enter and exit the property. So that, that was the nature of the viola, potential, potential violation.
Yeah, I did see the, so that plan is then how they're going to address that issue of a potential complaint or problem and the complaint?
Correct.
That was my question. I just want to know how they were going to address it.
Well, the special use permit process was used as a way to address the.
Well, it's necessary. They were not in compliance with our zoning code. Come into compliance with this permit, but it was also, well, the applicant fixed their design issues on the project.
And I, how long, maybe I missed it here. How long have you been at that location, Mr. Plentia?
Three years.
Three years, okay. Have we had any complaints, April?
Just that, just that one that we're aware of.
Okay. Those were employees trying to, waiting to get in, is that what that was?
Yeah, that's what we understood. We're not absolutely certain, but it was.
Because you don't have customers coming to contract with you or anything like that.
No.
Are you out at the Tulare Lindsay swap meet? Have I seen you out there?
Yes, right now, yes.
That swap meet's owned by a family, a gal from Three Rivers, and it's done very well, and food service is good out there.
Lot of people there.
All right, thank you for your comments. And is there anyone else that would like to speak on this particular special use permit? Okay, thank you, Mr. Placentia. And we'll close the public hearing now, and then I think we can see the recommendations that April has outlined here. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Go, I'll go ahead.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Let you want to. Make a motion, we do a category exemption pursuant to fourteen California Code Regulation, section one five zero six one B three and general rule section, and, rule section and section one five three oh one existing facility. Consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA guideline and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP one seven dash zero five three, subject to finding and conditions.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Dong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Willatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay. All right, now we can move on to, let's say whatever, item B, which is a special use permit PSP seventeen dash zero five nine for Fabian Jimenez. And this is a categorical exemption and special use to approve a special use to allow an equestrian establishment, miniature horses or ponies on a one acre portion of a one point seven acre parcel located in the RA one hundred zone. And this site is located one thousand thirty feet west of Road ninety-two and three hundred twenty-five feet north of Avenue two forty in the Tulare city limits, within the county adopted City of Tulare urban development boundary. And again, we have April.
Good morning again, Chairman Elliot and Commissioners. Fabian Jimenez brings the ponies to events and meets up with Mr. Placentia sometimes at the same places. The application follows a co-compliance file investigation and project review committee discussion. The site is, does, has indirect access from West Street. It's within the City of Tulare urban development boundary. There, the access is along a private road that was established by a nineteen seventy-eight parcel map. Public works had no recommended conditions. The applicant tows the rigs and ponies from the site to customers' events on weekdays and weekends between six AM and three PM. The estimate maximum, estimated maximum daily trips would be about four. Nearest off-site residence is about two hundred fifty feet east of the facility. Any noise generated is less than nearby ag-related equipment and would have no impact on noise It's within the county adopted City of Tulare urban development boundary, subject to the Tulare General Plan two thousand thirty-five, which designates the land as residential estate. The City of Tulare responded to a consultation request and stated it has no comments regarding the proposal. Because the equestrian facility will not include bovine animals, the facility will not be subject to the Tulare County Animal Confinement Facilities Plan. The, it is in compliance with relevant policies of the Tulare County General Plan elements. For the zoning ordinance, the one point seven acre parcel size could allow a maximum of six regular-sized adult horses plus unweaned offspring. Now, miniature horses are smaller by a factor of about five to one. So because the ponies are about one-fifth, the regular horse's size up to about thirty could be considered acceptable. The applicant proposes stapling twenty-five on that site. So the project is consistent with the zoning ordinance with a conditionally approved use Will not have an impact on biological resources. There, it does have, we do have historical precedence of San Joaquin kit fox near the site, but the area has been used for rural residences and agriculture, and no signs of special species on the, on the site. No waterways or wetlands on or nearby. Surroundings include AE twenty zoned walnut orchards to the north and RA zoned rural residences in all directions. City limits are about three hundred fifty south, three hundred fifty feet south, and contain residential subdivisions on the other side. The project qualifies for categorical exemption per the general rule pertaining to a project that does not have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment and therefore is not subject to SEQA. The site contains a single-family residence, a shop building, some tool sheds, twelve mini stable stalls, horse barn, horse corral, a wash rack stall, three pasture pens totaling thirty, thirty thousand square feet, well, septic system, propane tank, forty-foot-long trailer parking spaces and fencing with the gates. The applicant proposes adding a hay barn, which will be added to the site plan. Again, twenty-five ponies is less than the thirty that, thirty that would be considered acceptable and is per the zoning ordinance. Mr. Jimenez is the sole employee and lives on the site, and the property is owned by his uncle. Environmental Health Services Division recommended conditions of approval that all horse corrals and feed storage areas be properly managed to prevent nuisance of odors, dust, and vectors, vector arborage. Animal waste shall be properly disposed of. County Fire Department requires the facility to maintain fire department access at all Notice of the public hearing, provided a ten-day comment period, was mailed to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet, also published in Visalia Times Delta. No other comments were received. That and staff's report. And Fabian Jimenez is here in the audience if you have any questions for him.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if the applicant would like to come forward and just tell us a little bit about this interesting operation.
Good morning. My name is Fabian Jimenez. I live at fourteen oh seven Northwest Street, number C in Tulare. Like Mr. Elliot was saying, I started with the gal from the Tulare Lindsay swap meet right there. I met her when I was young, and there used to be like pony rides there, but the people there, they would really miss a lot of times. And she told me that, why didn't I start a business like that? Because we've always had horses all my life, so she helped me start, and then from there, well, we started growing. Then my uncle bought this property out here, so he told me to move in there so I can have all my animals and everything there. And we fixed everything up to be able to have the ponies and everything there good.
So are you busy then on Sundays, pretty much?
Yeah, every Sunday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We go to Lindsay, Porterville, and then Tulare, Orozco. And during the week, when there's, when the kids are out of school, we go during the week, too, like to Visalia on Thursdays.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
You don't have customers coming to your, this facility, do you?
No, no, we go out, like, for private parties. Whenever they hire us, we go out and we take the ponies over there to their house. Yeah, we're fully insured and everything for every occasion.
Are you guys, are you also breeding there on the property and raising the young?
We, we breed certain mares every year just because, just to have like little foals, but then eventually we, I keep some or I rehome them, like, to certain people, because sometimes people want to buy ponies off of me, but I don't want to sell the ones that I use for work, so I just sell them one of the offstrings. Yeah, but like every year I have like three or four mares that give me a baby every year.
Okay, is there any other questions then?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Who did these renderings here? This is pretty interesting. Was that you, April? Did you do those?
Oh, no, to add the little slides in there?
Yes.
Off of the, Mr., after, off of Fabian's Facebook page, yes.
Okay, interesting. Couple of questions. I see you've got some enclosed stalls, and then you've got some open stalls here. Or are these the same, the same stalls, but just a different?
Along the far side by where it says Exhibit A.
Right.
You see those little squares along right there? That's where I put the ponies, like, well, like, right now, I wash them, like, Friday in the morning whenever it's warm. Then I put a jacket on them, then I put them there for Saturday. And those, I keep them in there, but whenever they're not working, I keep them loose. I divide them between three, three pens, so like on the far, far right, my right, I would have like the mares, like, there's a group of friends, you know? Because there's some that don't like each other, so I have to keep them separate. Yeah, so I divide them right there between the three pens. And then on this side, I have a horse barn that I, I bought whenever we first bought the house, but I had, I had two big horses there, which now I only have two foals that are yearlings. And then on, on this far side, that pen is where we work them, where, when I ride them, behind the shop.
Now, are they, are they stabled every night, or do they stay out in the pasture?
Which ones, the ponies?
Yes.
I rotate them. The ones that are friends, like, they get certain days, you know, and then I, just like on the work nights, well, whenever, so I don't have to catch them early in the morning, I staple them, feed them right, and then let them out.
What kind, do you, what kind, do you put any bedding in the stables?
Yeah, shavings.
Use shavings?
Yeah, Mountain Creek.
And then?
They have their automatic water, and every, every single stable has automatic water, and every pen has an automatic water, too.
Okay, and then I assume that the stables are cleaned out daily?
Oh, yeah.
With all the, okay. And then how often do you change out all the shavings?
No, well, when I clean them, I have to, I take everything out.
Every day?
Well, whenever the shavings are really wet, I take the shavings out, but if not, I just pass with a little rake and a shovel, and I just take the manure.
Okay, yeah, right, okay.
But the shavings, it takes like two or three days for it to get really wet, and then I have to change it out.
Okay.
And I have my own dump trailer, which I fill it up with my, I have a little tractor, I fill up the dump trailer, and then I have a friend of mine that lives north of me, and he has a big field where he grows corn in July, so he lets me spread it out right there, and he discusses with his tractor.
Well, that's how you get rid of it. That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, I get rid of everything, yeah.
Okay.
Once I fill up the dump trailer, I take it.
Okay. Reason I ask in another lifetime, I used to manage horse ranches.
Yeah.
So I know a little bit about that. Yeah, I've delivered over two hundred babies.
Yeah.
It's amazing how much they are like people, and how they behave like we do, so.
Like that one that April put on the slideshow, Pinta, the one that was by herself, she's like really close to me. Only me and her can work together. Like, when my dad takes her or something, she doesn't like it, and when I tell her, come on, she pushes and stops and stops.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like a really interesting business, and I'm glad Pam Lockwood or Lockhart was able to get you into this business.
Yeah, she was the one that helped me start it all.
Yeah, she's done that for so many people out there, it's amazing, the stuff that goes on at that swap meet. In fact, it'd be nice, I think you'd have an eye-opening experience by touring that place lately. It's changed a lot, and it's.
Yeah, she's been fixing it up really nice.
Yeah, it's a great experience on a Sunday.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, and.
Just one, one more question on this. I'm inclined to go along with twenty-five animals, although that's a lot of, on an acre, even small ones. That's a lot of animals on an acre.
These are little ones.
I understand.
I know.
Yeah, she's done that for so many people out there, it's amazing, the stuff that goes on at that sawmill. In fact, it'd be nice, I think you'd have an eye-opening experience by touring that place lately, it's changed a lot and it's.
Yeah, she's been fixing it up really nice.
Yeah, it's a great experience on a Sunday.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, and?
Just one, one more question on this. Uh, I'm inclined to go along with twenty-five animals, although that's a lot of, on an acre, even small ones, that's a lot of animals on an acre.
These are little ones.
I understand. But, uh, what I, the only, the concern I have is a, is probably a fly vector on there and even small animals attract flies. I would just ask the county to monitor that and if there's any issues with, uh, uh, you know, fly problems that, that they institute some sort of mitigation process, but, uh, other than that, you know, I guess I'm okay with it, but it, it, it is a lot of animals and there's gonna be a lot of waste and if it's not handled very quickly and, and moved out right away, it's gonna cause some issues.
Yeah, through the chair, we, uh, when we do receive calls about flies, we send inspectors out immediately, so. That becomes an issue, they, they will be out of your sight.
Yeah, no, no, cause well, my neighbors and everyone around there has horses, you know, so the thing about the manure and all that, my dad helps me all the time, so it's always both of us, you know, and we're on it fast, cause I don't like to have dirty animals at a swam, at a Swammy, you know, it's a public place, so we're always on them, fly spray and all that, and then I always have things for the flies.
Yeah, that, you know, it's manageable, you just have to stay on it and you just can't be leaving, uh, waste sitting for any length of time, especially in the summer.
Yeah.
Have issues.
Well, yeah, and I love the animals, so I take care of them, you know, they take care of me, I take care of them, so.
That's right.
I'm always on it, yeah.
That's the way it should be. All right, thank you, and, um, if there's nobody else that would like to comment on this project?
Thank you.
Or is there, anybody like to speak on this project, yea or nay? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
I have one, one question to follow up on what Ed said is, um, it says that there's up to thirty that can fit on there and we're, we're providing up to twenty-five. I'm wondering if, if it should go up to the thirty, that way he's not out of compliance when he's at twenty-six. So, um, but I understand what you're saying, that it's already allowed, but according to this, thirty is allowable.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that. I think if he wants twenty-five, twenty-five is fine. We don't have any police cops if he gets up to, or horse cops if he gets to twenty-six, but, um.
It's probably appropriate for the way it's written, it seems like. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? There we could entertain a motion. I think we, um, wanna review, I mean.
I'll read it if I can get a little light for him. I make a motion that, uh, we approve a conditional exemption or categorical exemption, see, I can't see it, categorical exemption pursuant to, uh, fourteen California Code Regulations, Section one five zero six one, uh, subsection B three, the general rule, uh, section, section one five three zero one, existing facilities and consistent, and consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guidelines and conditionally approved special use permit PSP seventeen dash oh five nine, subject to findings and conditions.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Phillies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we can move on to this Staten Solar Corporation item. Is this the one, Bill, did you have, is this the one?
The next one after.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Just the last item.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, item C under this.
I forgot who is that?
Six, six C, which is special use permit PSP seventeen dash zero six nine, this is the Staten Solar Corporation, and this is a special use permit to allow an agricultural service establishment the storage of solar panels and equipment on a point four-one acre portion of a ten-acre parcel located in AU ten. And the site is located on the northwest corner of Avenue eighty-eight, Road two twenty-four, approximately one mile west of Terabella. And again, we have April.
Good morning, third time, Chairman Elliott and Commissioners. Yes, it's a busy December. Glad to see you. The Board of Supervisors has recognized that solar facilities and installation companies are increasingly important with more dairies and farms turning to solar. About fifty percent or more of the applicant's sales are to agricultural customers for powering irrigation water pumps. There's no code violation involved in this proposal, which was discussed with the Project Review Committee. The site's at the northeast corner of Avenue eighty-eight and Road two twenty-four and about one mile west of Terabella. Uh, has direct ac, direct access to Avenue eighty-eight and no employees will be at the site on a regular basis, but the applicant anticipates about three weekly deliveries and five weekly visits by employees. As deliveries are made, they'll go out to the site. Estimated maximum daily trips, uh, arrivals and departures would average three point two trips per day. Public works had no recommended conditions. The site is outside any urban boundary and is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan, which does, which designates it for valley agriculture. The proposal is in compliance with very relevant policies of the Tulare County General Plan. In particular, the facility is consistent with the land use settlement policy, uh, LU two point five regarding agriculture support facilities. There's an existing storage, uh, building on the, on the property and the county encourages beneficial reuse of existing or vacant agriculture support facilities for new businesses, including non-agricultural businesses. The AA ten zone allows an agricultural service establishment with a conditionally approved special use permit. As stated, stated earlier, approximately fifty percent or more of the sales are to agriculture customers. And the applicant plans to lease the property to a farmer, so, uh, the remaining property to a farmer, so they can plant orchards like those in the area. The eighteen-hundred-square-foot metal storage building on the site was built in about two thousand and four. Uh, per Google aerial photos, the property was planted in row crops up to two thousand and twelve. In the area, uh, our AA ten zone properties with orchards, open, and open agricultural land and scattered rural residences. Project will not have an impact on biological resources, contains no wetlands or waterways, and no species are concerned. The applicant acquired the property in April of this year and, yeah, it, storage building is surrounded by fencing with enough room inside the yard for, uh, parking trucks and such and, and equipment. They've upgraded a twenty-foot-wide decomposed granite access road with a turnaround for fire, fire equipment. They will install a portable toilet for employees and water storage tanks for fire suppression. They may add up to five shipping containers for supplemental storage if the operations grow significantly. No hazardous supplies or materials will be stored on the site. The applicant also proposes planting trees or bushes on, along two sides of the yard perimeter fence which face the two public roads. A notice for the public hearing provided a ten-day comment period was mailed to surrounding property owners. The applicant is, Thomas, Thomas Gay is in the audience and, and speak, answer any questions for you, if you have any for me.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone that would like to speak on this particular special use permit?
Morning, I'm Thomas Gay, Chief Financial Officer of Staten Solar. Address is two six seven six Lariat Court, Livermore, California. We purchased this property in this area because we have found considerable success selling in solar systems to the agricultural community in Kern in Tulare County, uh, over seven million dollars worth of business in the last couple of years, which is over half. We serve all of California, but have found that this area is a, a great application for our services. We find that strategically, having a supply area here would be a, a good way for us to be able to stage our equipment. There isn't any real operation that goes on, on, off sites, it's simply storage. And we've tried to make it clear that, uh, that would be the only real purpose of this. Uh, we feel that we are fortunate to locate this piece of property where, um, that inner fenced area should more than serve what we believe is going to be needed for storage and then surrounded by the ninety-five percent of the property, uh, which is now currently just open fallow land. We're not in the farming business, so we're gonna have to work a little bit on how we best utilize the rest of the property, but we, we do see an opportunity and we'll have to work that one out.
Have any wells on the property?
Yes, uh, there is a well that is not all that large, at least from what I understand. It's going to be sufficient to, uh, get, get the trees and the shrubs that we're proposing there, but it wouldn't be enough to water an orchard.
This was an existing facility, right, your warehouse?
Correct.
What was there before or was it abandoned or?
I believe that a couple had, uh, some horses there. Uh, I did notice a horse trough, uh, in the outer area, you know, it looked like it was set up to be able to allow them, uh, open rein outside and then that inner area was probably for, um, feed, perhaps some implements.
I like this project, cause it's basically kinda like an infill and rehabilitates the neighborhood, so it's really not taking anything out of production.
That's a good reason.
I think, as you know, out in, in the country like that, uh, security is gonna be an issue. We have ag issue, crime issues here in our county.
Yes, we, we've had those difficulties at our job sites, uh, and this, this area, because of the inner fence and outer fence, we've, uh, gone ahead and figured out how to set up a, uh, security network in the inner fence and have, what, ten sensors with cameras that are monitored and believe that will be enough to prevent further problems.
Anybody on site, so?
Um, we, we don't believe that, uh, having anybody stationed on a regular basis there is, is gonna be our business plan. Don't really make money storing things, uh, but having people regularly visit, load, unload, uh, would be the way we'd approach this.
Plus they have a lot of expensive equipment, what if they decided that they wanted to put like a, uh, you know, a travel trailer with somebody who spends the nights just for security? What's the county's policy on that?
We could handle that through, uh, just a minor modification to the special use permit, if we need to change something like that.
Well, the Sheriff's Department has a program now too where they can actually mark some of the materials on the site, so. And I, there, there's some kind of pilot program right now where a lot of that's free the first time you use it and, uh, up to a certain quantity and it's a good way that if something does come up missing, a way to track it and find out where it went.
But I noticed that some remote sites, uh, the owners have a, like a travel trailer, it's by no means a permanent home, but, uh, sometimes a guy with a shotgun makes a lot of difference. We are a redneck county, so.
Yes.
Well, it's interesting, too, Livermore's got a lot of history and energy, so might as well bring someone a bit down here. And we certainly appreciate you investing here in Tulare County. Is there any other questions for the applicant or owner? Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, this is a public hearing, anybody else wanna speak on this particular special use? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing then. And, uh, review what we are about to do here.
I'd like to, um, make a motion to accept a categorical exemption pursuant to fourteen California Code Regulations, Section one five three zero three, construction or conversion of small structures, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP one seven zero six nine, subject to findings and conditions.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Phillies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you and welcome to Tulare County. There we are, Dan, you've been hiding behind that computer. I couldn't even see the top of your head.
Okay, we can move on here to our Zone Variance Issue, item D. Zone variance number PZV seventeen dash zero one one and tentative parcel map PPM seventeen dash zero three six. This is Catherine Meyer, trustee, and Don Stibbers, California Land Survey, and this is the one with the timber sale. Okay, I was jumping ahead of myself there. And on this one, we have Dana Metlin as our presenter.
Chairman Elliott, Commissioners, um, this is a request to approve a zone variance and allow the division of one thirty-seven acre parcel in the timber preserve zone. And the environmental determination for the variance is a general rule exemption consistent with SEQA, where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the subject, or the activity is not subject. And the SEQA determination for the map is a categorical exemption pursuant to Section one five three zero three, class three, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. Entitlement for the variance is found in Section sixteen of the zoning ordinance, which authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of this ordinance result through strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of the provisions thereof. Entitlement for the parcel map is found in Section ten dot five dot C, which states that the timber preserve zone property may not be divided into parcels containing less than one hundred and sixty acres, except as provided in Section five one 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 nine dot five of government code, which reads that parcels are, which are zone timberland preserve cannot be divided into parcels containing less than one hundred and sixty acres unless the original owner prepares a joint timber management plan, prepared or approved as to content by a registered professional forester for the parcels to be created. And in this situation, the applicant did submit a timber harvesting plan, which was prepared in two thousand and five. The plan was approved by the California Department of Forestry and the property was selectively thinned in two thousand and six. This timber harvesting plan was confirmed as being still relevant and valid by Jeff Glutney, a registered professional forester, on March third, two thousand and seventeen. And the project is located in the unadopted Upper Balch Park Plan and the land use designation is timber production and the project is consistent with these general plan policies. This project was noticed according to the law. Staff has not received any comments regarding the project. This is the vicinity map. The project is located at five two three hundred Balch Park Road, approximately twenty-one miles from the intersection of Bay thirty-seven and Highway one ninety, which is along Balch Park Road north of Springville. This is the aerial photograph. There is an existing cabin located on the north side of Balch Park Road. There you are. The zone variance is to allow the division of land, creating two parcels less than the 160 acres required in this timber production zone. And there are mandatory findings when considering a zone variance. The first finding is that there are special circumstances, and the special circumstances for this property include size, topography, and location. This is a sectional 40-acre piece of property located on either side of Balch Park Road at the 6,000-foot elevation. The parcel is already less than 160 acres in size, and it has completed the required timber harvesting plan for the subject site. The second mandatory finding is that the variance is not a special privilege, and this zone variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon which other property in the vicinity, because a deed restriction will be recorded with the resolution, which is in accordance with Government Code Section The third mandatory finding is that no unauthorized activity will be granted, and the timber preserve zone is specific to timber harvesting. No use not expressly authorized by the zone regulations would be granted by a particular It's noted that a cabin currently exists on the subject parcel. This structure was built prior to the timber preserve zone being implemented, which was effective November 30, 1978. And the section, Timber Preserve Zone 10.5D, requires approval of a use permit for single-family dwellings in this zone. So if Parcel 2 were to want to build a structure, they would have to get a special use permit. The fourth mandatory finding is that the variance is consistent with the general plan, and the granting has been found. It's consistent with the 2030 general plan. This is the site plan. As mentioned, this parcel is divided among, along Balch Park Road, and Parcel 1 would be on the north side, 19.56 acres, and Parcel 2 would be on the south side of Balch Park Road at 20.34 acres. And if the zone variance is approved, the proposed tentative map would comply with all zoning regulations applicable to this property. And staff is recommending that your commission make two motions. First, to approve the general rule exception and the zone variance, PZV 17-011. And the second motion to approve a categorical exemption and tentative parcel map, PPM 17-036.
Question for Dana.
Dana, you've mentioned that property would have a deed restriction on it. What is the restriction gonna be?
That in relationship to the timber harvest plan, that it would be used for, the property would be used for timber harvesting?
Okay, so they wouldn't be subdividing this and then selling it, and then having somebody come in here and ask for, build a home up there, is that?
We requested that, if that was their intent, they begin that process now, because it would require a special use permit, but that is not their intent, so.
I spent a lot of time up in that area, especially in Mountain Home State Forest. And I would tell you that the forest in Mountain Home, where they've taken all these dead trees out, it's a very healthy forest, and so what they're doing is really good, because generally in that area, more dead trees, it's just unbelievable. Sad, the number of trees, because of that bark beetle. And I'm a little confused exactly where this is, because when I'm going around on Polaris, I know where I'm going, but I really don't know where I am, so. Because the roads just twist around, but it's very beautiful, so I think it's a good project.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone, the applicant, or anyone would like to speak on this? Just give us a little background information on it. Apparently not. So, okay, we do have someone coming forward. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Meyer Conley, 3326 South Stevenson Street in Visalia.
I apologize if I've ever strayed onto your land, but it's not intentional stuff.
Oh, that's okay.
Once you get into this area, it's spectacular, so.
I like it here. I came from the Santa Cruz Mountains in Los Angeles, and had 40 acres up there of rural property. And I sold it and came down this way. You can get more for your buck here than you do in Santa Clara County. So, and I bought the house in Visalia and then the property up in Balch Park. There were some friends that owned it prior to me, and I told them if they ever wanted to sell, to let me know. And they were from Carmel Valley.
So what's the impetus for splitting the parcel and?
I have two sons, so it's just putting it into the trust that they each have a piece. Whether or not after I die and they wanna sell it, it would be up to them to come back for the biological study, for building, or whatever. One will have a house, and the other one will have to do what he wants with it.
And we have access to 40 acres close by, but it's beautiful.
Yeah, although the trees, like you say, it's a shame how they've died, and so quickly, and they're still dying.
When you go in the Mountain Home State Park, you don't see any dead trees, because they've done a great job clearcutting the ones that are there. So it's beautiful.
So is there giant sequoias on this parcel?
Yes, several of them. I have one of the largest ones. It's at least 250 feet tall and maybe 64 feet in circumference.
Wow, is that a named tree, then?
Named? I don't know. I didn't name it.
Well, tree.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of them up there that are named, and this is probably a historic timber claim that was handed down from the 19th century, I assume. And just was always proved up and continued in private ownership, so. Do you have any responsibilities because of that, to take care of the property in any way, or?
Because of the trees?
Well, I mean, is there requirements in terms of, you know, some of the landscaping, or any things that you do to maintain the character of the land?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, I had the insurance on it, and they came up, and I have 500 feet clearance from one side of the cabin, 400 feet on one side, and 200 on the other, so I'm constantly cleaning it.
Yeah.
Down the road, I'll probably put a sprinkler system on the roof, but.
And when was the cabin built? I'm not sure I saw that.
1977, I think it was.
Okay.
And I just put hardy board backing on the whole thing, because the woodpeckers had destroyed the cabin that was there.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this zone variance? Seeing none, we can close the public hearing. And I guess we could, if there's no further discussion among the commissioners, we could look for a motion on this.
I will try to read this, but I'll make the motion. First motion to approve a general rule exemption consistent with SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 of California Code Regulations in Section 15061B3, and conditionally approve Zone Variants Number PZV 17-011.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Make the next motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 of California Code Regulations, Sections 15303, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 17-036.
I'll second that motion as well.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, the next item, I have to recuse myself from Mr. Nagra. I don't think Mr. Nagra's here, but I'm.
I think we're gonna have a problem, Mr. Chair. I don't know if we're gonna have a quorum.
Well, I don't even know him, so I'm.
Oh, you don't have to do that.
I have no, I have no. Our firm represents him. But, so I have, I don't know this gentleman, do I? I work for this gentleman here. Well, I have to recuse myself?
I would think in this instance, if we wanna be consistent with the original site plan review that was done, and if there was any questions at that time, that would be the same now. So I would say, just to be consistent, everybody who thinks they should have recused themselves in the first instance when this PSR came through, that they should do so now. So, yes. There is a potential conflict.
My only issue, I mean, I see the name Nagra, which is not real common, and if it's the same family, I guess, then I need to recuse myself, because.
And we believe you did recuse yourself at the first one, we're not certain.
Oh, you say I should also. Yeah.
So without a quorum, we can't discuss it, I don't think, can we?
Yeah, we understand that.
Yeah, we may have to continue this item. I. Our absent member here would be okay.
If, through the chair, if those that are gonna recuse themselves, go ahead and recuse themselves at this point, and we'll finish the matter up, and then they'll come back. It'll be quick.
Okay, this item E is the final site plan number PSR 17-006, and this is Nagra and Nagra. This is a 25-foot-tall high-rise digital price sign, and 135-foot-tall high-rise sign, and two monument signs on a three-acre site comprised of two parcels, previously entitled for a gas station and commercial retail center. And this site is located on the south side of 312, that's Rigan, approximately 400 feet east of Road 72 and the community of Goshen.
Through the chair, since we do not have a quorum, I would recommend that we continue this item until date certain on January 10. I just wanted to clarify for the record that I believe the newspaper publication incorrectly identified it as two 25-foot signs and two 35-foot signs, which in reality, it is only one of each. Also, I believe there is, there may be members in the audience that wish to address and comment, so I would, through County Council's recommendation or not, is to allow anybody that's come to speak on this matter, put that into the record, and then continue the matter until, until they have a full presentation on January 10. Yes, that would be acceptable.
Okay, so we can open the public hearing then. Yeah, and anyone that would like to speak today that's come, can enter comments into the record then? Sounds like we have some business to clarify on this one.
Good morning, I'm Patrick Isherwood. I'm the manager for rental housing assets with Self-Help Enterprises, and Self-Help Enterprises owns the lots next to the site map, which we were notified of the public hearing. And just coming here is, with that is just encouragement, and I believe that it is process of respect to the residential multifamily neighborhood next to it, that the height of the signs, that, on the site plan, the sighting of the lights, kind of the positioning of the lights, and just those are taken into consideration in respect to the residents next to it. I believe that that is normal practice, but just mentioning that, wish, not here to speak on anything about the zoning, or wish the project well, and absolutely just that staff are mindful and that process is reviewed, so that's it.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak on this particular final site plan? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, or continue, we'll continue it until our, are we gonna date certain on this, or?
We are date certain on January 10, but we can't take a vote, so.
Yeah.
By default, it will be her to get on.
Okay, all right, so.
No more notice will be.
Have any of the other commissioners said they're not gonna be here for that date? Actually, the three of us and Nancy, are we gonna be here for that date, or?
I've missed that date a lot, but this year I'm not going, so. But I'll be here for the 10th.
If we have to continue it again, we'll continue it again.
Okay, so now, do we need to renotice, because it was incorrectly noticed?
I, that would be County Council decision, however, it's less intense than what was notified. It was notified as.
Oh, I got you.
It was, so if we didn't receive any comment, other than Self-Help's comment, I would not think that it would be notified, because anybody would have been here present or provide comment to us, which we didn't receive any other.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, so we can't vote on this, so we will continue the public hearing and go on to, move on to item seven.
Sorry about that.
Okay, under item 7A, we have our calendar for 2018, and looks pretty much like our standard setup with a time off of the World Ag Expo. So I guess we can entertain a motion to approve the calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2018 Planning Commission calendar as presented by staff.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, on our item B here is our traditional passing of the gavel, so to speak. We are electing our chair for 2018. Do we have a nomination for 2018?
I nominate Gil Aguilar.
I'll second.
We got a second? Any other nominations? I nominate Nancy. No, okay, Gil has been nominated and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Epstein.
And then our vice chair, do we know who's in line for that? That be, that's Inez here?
Turning with Bill again.
Oh, we go back to Bill?
We go back to Bill?
Wayne.
Oh, no, Wayne.
Wayne.
It's usually the person who it is knows, so.
I don't know, but I think I nominate Wayne Millies for vice chair.
Okay.
It's the old one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, we have Wayne nominated for vice chair. Can we have roll call, please?
Dong?
Yes.
Billy?
Epstein.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Willatch?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
I came on the Planning Commission, they did a dirty trick. I came on like in November or October, and then when it came time to vote, they voted me the chair. It's like.
I had a feeling you didn't mind, Bill.
Yeah, almost 20 years.
That's the way they did things back in those days.
I did wanna make a comment here, that, you know, it's, it's actually, this is my second completion of chair, and, you know, I may be on again to do a third one, who knows? But I did wanna say that it's been really good. The staff has really streamlined the process and made it a lot easier for us who have to come here and sometimes deal with really lengthy agendas. So, again, I thank you all for your help in 2017, and we look forward to your continued help in when Gil takes over next month. So thank you, and Happy New Year to all of you.
I'd like to thank John for a good year as chair.
Yeah, plus John is. Yeah, plus John has been very instrumental in keeping our county planning commissioners' organization going, which is good.
And now, did this board of supes, I guess we'll get to that. And I, I thank you, Bill, and I did wanna say one thing. Now our Redding dates are finalized and so is our hotel and headquarters. So within the next week or so, we're gonna be getting information on that in terms of being able to book the rooms at the brand-new Sheraton in Redding. And this is, it's.
Hotel?
What's the date?
The dates are the first weekend in May, so we can look on here real quick and.
Sixth, and where?
It's in Redding, California.
Already, that'd be nice.
Fifth and sixth.
Yeah, it's, well, we actually have to be there on the fourth for the sessions. And then the fifth is the, the field day. And the Sheraton is located right on the Sacramento River and it's, like I said, it's a brand-new hotel. It's opening at the, I think, January 21st. I'll have an email for all you participants that you can begin booking our room block. We have a really good package put together, so I'll let you know more about that. But you don't wanna miss this one. This one's gonna be exciting.
You can do a little research maybe on rail and bus and what it's gonna.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll have that and we're even looking into a charter from our airport, so. Our president this year up in Redding is a pilot too, so we'll see. Well, we're gonna, I know we're going to be doing some interesting things up there that are gonna interest everybody. And one of the big themes of this conference will be the interaction between the cities and the county up there. And we're gonna have a lot of participation from city planning commissioners and county commissioners this year, so.
Sure, Gil.
It's gonna be quite a shooting match. So at this time, we'll move on to our director's report.
Right, thank you. Just to kinda give a little bit of an overview of, of this last year, real brief, and then what we're looking forward to in the coming year. This last year, really, besides our emphasis on economic development, which, which we've really continues to thrive in, in the county, we also had a lot of planning activities, a lot of planning branch, long-term plans. Last year, we, and it was just, just a couple of weeks ago, when the board adopted the, we had 22 community plans adopted last year in one, one year. Five legacy plans, 11 hamlet plans and six community plans. The biggest one being Early Mart, but out of all those 22, only two had ever had a planning document for their community before. So these are all new plans for, for communities and it really will help emphasize and keep driving that economic development opportunities because each of these plans included rezoning, land use designation changes and rezoning, which really gives opportunities for growth in those communities. And we've received a lot of positive impact or positive responses by, by people that were part of the plan. Small, small business owners that wanted to do something, but the cost of having to go through a zone change and all of that was very prohibited to get their, their business off the ground. Through this process, they're, they're ready to go. And once the board adopted the, the last, the last cluster back on, on the fifth, we received phone calls and inquiries immediately afterwards. Is it ready? Can we start moving forward now? Can we start going? So that, that showed that this was a very successful operation. So we had a lot of that. The other big plan, uh, planning piece that was done was just adopted just yesterday at the board. The Confined Animal Facilities Plan, that's been in the works for seven to 10 years, I believe. They're going through a lot, a lot of work. Your commissioner looked at it, went through very efficiently through the public hearing process on that. And yesterday, it went to the board and it was approved unanimously at the board yesterday. So it looks very, very good and, and very positive, positive for the industry. And, and we'll see how that goes forward as we implement the components of that.
What type of opposition did you see there?
Well, you know, I'll tell you, the opposition was in the form of one letter. Between the, once planning, your planning commission held the thing, we received one comment letter from Sierra Club and at the hearing, there was no opposition whatsoever.
Wasn't that primarily just based on a, it was a decimal point or something like that? There was a difference in the whole thing?
Well, I, I don't know exactly. There was, there was a number of comments that, that staff has responded to regarding the SEQA document and the plan itself. So I think everything's covered well on that, so we've moved forward with that and, and we'll be implementing that plan as we go forward. There's, there's procedures in there to compile a checklist for dairies that want to expand or, and, and so it's an easier streamlined thing. Basically, there's a lot in the, in the, when the first ACFP was adopted back in 2000. Since then, there's been a lot more stricter regulations regarding dairies from, from the water board and the air district. And some of those regulations were overlapping, some of them were inconsistent with the ACFP. So what this is doing is providing a streamlined process in that the experts are those, the district in the, in the water board. They, they, they have the authority, the regulatory authority and, and the expertise for, for permitting. So all of our dairies are required to be consistent and compliant and have permits with those, those agencies. We don't wanna overlap and do something, so this is a streamlined process that, that, if they're compliant with those agencies, then we're able to streamline the process. And that's really what this was about, being able to do that. So there's policies put out there, so we'll start to implement those as we move forward now. Looking forward into the next year, we still do have community plans going forward. We have Goshen, Three Rivers, and we'll be picking up Cutler, Rossi and, and moving forward on that. So we have three significant-sized community plans going forward. Plus, there's a, a number of private development that we'll be seeing and bringing forward as well this, this next year. There's also one that, that we'll be seeing probably at the first of, actually, the first meeting of, of your commission in January, we'll, we'll be bringing forward an informational item regarding the lamp for onsite wastewater treatment systems. There's a, it's a state mandate that each local agency management plan for, for onsite wastewater treatment. So the, each county has to adopt their own plan and, and go through a process. We're in the, in the process of completing that with the help of a consultant. So we're gonna workshop that to the Water Commission on, I believe, the Monday before your first meeting. We'll have, talk to some engineers and some other things and, and kinda give some information there and bring some information to your planning commission as well on that first meeting. That's tentatively scheduled for that. And then within a few, few weeks, we'll be bringing it back for recommendations to the board and then board adoption as well. So that's something that we're looking forward to. There's also a couple of large solar projects that were, we, we don't have a, a real permit yet in. They're looking at the, the project review stage. So we're looking at that, that we haven't seen for maybe four years, big project coming in. I think there's been an expansion at a couple of the substations that have allowed additional capacity. So now I think some, some other developers are, are coming in, so we'll see that. Also, another project we'll probably be working on will be the SEDS, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the county. This is something that we've done a combined one with the Economic Development Corp., has done one for the county and, and all the jurisdictions have, have in their components or pieces. But as there's been changes at the EDC and, and they're kinda downsizing and looking at scaling back of what they do, that may fall back to the county to develop that program. So, so that's something we might be going forward. Have a meeting tomorrow morning with the EDC to talk about what they are and what they aren't doing in the future. So that might be something that might be on their eyes as well. So there's a lot of, a lot of good stuff still coming forward. And our activity levels are up. I mean, the numbers of projects, the project processing is done and, and for our environmental division, for all of the road projects. 280, as you can tell, is that, we just kicked that off this year and we're well, well into that. Lot of, lot of good projects going forward, so.
The state regulations on the wastewater treatment, what does that apply to residential and?
It, it applies, well, yeah, it applies to everything. Now, it doesn't, so it's, it's designed to protect groundwater sources and surface water bodies from contamination through having a proper designed, proper design and the proper location and maintenance and operations of, of onsite individual wastewater treatment systems. It creates, the, the plan will create standards. It'll have setback standards, it'll have different, all sorts of different standards that will be in there, including a component of parcel size for, for creating new parcels. Currently, the county has a one-acre minimum if you have septic and, and a private well. That will probably change under this. Some of the levels are looking at two or two-and-a-half acre minimums to do that. We're, we're looking at potential exemptions in certain areas because in one area, that might be applicable where you're getting a lot of two-acre parcels. But then in the valley floor, where we create a one-acre home site parcel because they wanna keep everything else in ag, there might, there might not be another single-family home with a septic for a quarter mile away. The regulations really don't fit that. So we're gonna, so in this process, we'll be looking at some exemptions to that, hopefully, as far as that. But then in other places where there's clusters of homes, that makes perfect sense. So, so there will be going through that and these are good questions to bring up as we workshop and, and bring this forward next month.
Are they gonna put it back on the engineer to, when they, if it's a one-acre home site, to have an engineered plan?
Yes, there's engineered plan, there's requirements as far as, for permitting when, well, the RMA issues the building permit for a septic. However, the design and everything has to be reviewed through environmental health and they have to sign off on it. Through that process, there has to be an individual site analysis, soil sampling. There's, there's a lot of stuff involved in, in that. And we're just going through this process now. So there's gonna be a lot more involved before, before permits for septic systems are there or, or whether they have to do engineered and other, other things, so.
When I brought this up, I think at one other meeting, and that, are there better septic systems than the traditional ones? Where they're able to spread the effluent around without doing a extensive, I mean, are there other systems we're gonna look at? So we recommend that you, if you got one acre, maybe if you engineer it with a more efficient system, that might work. We're gonna have some ideas about that.
There, there will be, there will be, all of those things will be considered in, in, in the plan. But there will be minimum size lot sizes and there will be requirements of specific site analysis for each site in each.
Okay.
I don't know if you have anything?
Just through the numbers, through the fiscal year, we had pretty close to 430 projects, if I remember. Through the calendar year, we'll probably have more likely of the upwards of 470 projects this, this year. So you might be looking at upwards of 500 by the time we get to the end of the. So we have extremely streamlined the system and those community plans definitely help add to the, the number.
You said 22 community, five legacy, how many hamlets?
Well, 22 total.
Oh, 22 total.
There's five legacy plans, 11 hamlet plans and six community.
Gotcha. Good stuff.
And just as a matter of fact, I think we received three applications for Early Mart within weeks of the approval, so.
People were watching this.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were paying attention.
Well, we know what zone variance has caused, so it's critical.
And, and not only were they watching, they were participating.
Yes.
I mean, that's part of the community outreach, which was extensive in, in the case. Citizens, we talked with the small business owners saying, well, I've got this, I'd really like to, to be able to do this. This is what I wanna do, but I can't do it because, and so we incorporated those changes the best that we could into these plans, so they've. Plans that they have.
Anything else from the gallery over there? I don't wanna get Hector going, though.
You did the environmental, especially at the community plant component, you do the program EIR, you got this big old blanket coverage of environmental, then you can use that tier off of it.
That's what's coming for Three Rivers by the end of the month, correct?
Right, one size fits all.
Yeah, yeah, so that works well together with processing, the project processing, the economic development. We'll say ag and have environmental done, so that's very attractive for us, where the business is.
Okay, well, thanks to all you and, and we appreciate having counsel today. We really needed you, so. Thanks for being here, thanks to everybody and.
I have one question.
Anything else?
I know, I had, gave our county council a hard time today, but I was just kidding, honest. But you're relatively new to the county and what was your background?
My background is, lived in LA, 10 years in Sacramento, and this is my first gig out of law school.
And for the record, what universities did you go to?
McGeorge and UC Davis.
Welcome.
So what happened, did your car break down in Tarry County?
We love it here.
No, I gave up some other opportunities to pursue this one, so.
So you made the right decision, that's for sure.
I think so, that's fine.
These guys, Bill's been here longer. I've been just probably a year short of Bill's tenure here, but.
No term limits, huh?
There is, yeah, no, good thing. But I tell you, the, the administration here now is much, much better than it was. They take care of the issues ahead of time, they know what the issues are, they know, they mitigate them. We don't have to do any micromanagement here. You know, we just approve it or disapprove it and move on. I like, that's great.
It's certainly been a good year and let's just keep up the good work. I mean, I, I can see, and I just completed my 12th year, as did a couple of other people on this commission and it's been, you know, just getting better and better in terms of working with staff, so.
County council was always great. I mean, you know, when Julia, Julia Roberts was here, till she started acting, she's been.
She's doing better now, then.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn.
I'll be out the first meeting of the, the new year.
He will be gone to 10.
I will not be here.
Okay, well, you were. Okay, happy new year, everybody.